Around the corner of the door as you walk in is the actual Open Meeting Act. I will ask that you stand and join with us. Moment of silence and a pledge of allegiance. And I think it's only worthy that we keep in mind our friends that are right now in a situation right to the east, so think of them in the next few moments.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Langy?
Here.
Merrill?
Here.
Clausen?
Here.
Muren?
Here.
Moaning?
Here.
File?
Here.
All right. And before we take some action here, I think we'll ask the city administrator just to give us a quick briefing on what's going on here within the city of Norfolk and assistance.
Yes, Your Honor. As I think everyone knows, we've had some tornado strikes to our east. We do know that we had one farm home by Stanton that was destroyed and had three people trapped in in it. We sent some of our Norfolk resources out there to assist Stanton, fire and rescue, and have since got those folks out of the basement. And I think there's some serious injuries there. Then Pilger was in the line of that tornado as well. Extensive damage in Pilger. I haven't heard any official reports, though, but we've seen some pictures. Extensive damage there in the community. Unknown amount of injuries or number of injuries at this point, but we do have your emergency operations center here open in Norfolk as in a support mode for our sister cities to our east. We do have some resources there, boots-on-the-ground resources, fire resources there in Pilger as we speak. Quite a few, two rescue units, hazmat unit, and multi-casual trailer, and some heavy rescue equipment and trucks there. Lots of emergency resources going there from the area. So that's in action. PD has called in some extra support staff to work some security, potential security tonight to assist Pilger and assist State Patrol and Stanton County Sheriff's Office with that role as it develops. And also, our street crews are at the ready to send any additional resources there if requested as we go about recovering from that. So that's where we stand. Again, the OC will be open or remain open for a while until we can, you know, assist and manage this and help Pilger manage this and Stanton manage this situation. But that being said, that's really all I know. We've been getting reports, spied reports from the scene, but a lot of things are in action right now. So any questions?
I don't think so. I did have a short conversation with Mayor Payden over in Stanton, and she said it looked like their city came out okay, but it's the unknowns of their fellow neighbors outlining the city of. So just again, keep them in your thoughts. If no other questions, then let's go on and ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved, Your Honor.
Second.
A motion with a second to approve the consent agenda as provided you. Please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative.
And as well, we're looking for approval on the full agenda as presented you.
I'll make the motion, Your Honor.
Second.
We have a motion with a second to approve the full agenda. Again, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative.
Okay. And we're going to jump into a special presentation tonight, one only here, a proclamation for Vietnam Veterans Appreciation Week, whereas the city of Norfolk is honored to have been selected as the host city for the 30th Annual Nebraska Vietnam Veterans Reunion, and whereas many who served their country in Vietnam continue to have traumatic experiences and unpleasant memories that linger, and whereas many of you experienced anti-GI homecomings and much of your American society has not yet expressed its gratitude for your courageous service to your country. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Sue Fuchman, Mayor of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, by the power vested in me, do hereby proclaim the week of August 14 through the 17 as Vietnam Veterans Appreciation Week in the city of Norfolk and urge all citizens to take due note of the observance. Anyone in the audience here to accept this tonight? I know the Bowns family has really taken responsibility for this, so I'll make sure it gets to them. So, okay. We have a public hearing tonight to consider feasibility of amending the present comprehensive plan from ag open space to industrial at 2001 Northeast Industrial Highway. I will open the hearing and I note here Trent, but anyone here that's...
Trent's on that. Trent is in Pilger.
Is there anyone that's here that wants to...
You can combine both of these as well.
Okay. Anyone here that's going to speak to that? And what I'll do, at best suggestion, is to combine public hearing at the request of New Corp Corporation for zoning change from ag district to I-2 heavy industrial at 2001 Northeast Industrial Highway.
I can handle that.
Why don't you give us a quick...
This request is just in front of the mayor and council to, really in support of the Taeos operation. That land out there is currently zoned agriculture and is going to need to be changed to I-2 heavy industry, which fits perfectly with what is being developed out there in the near future. So this request is from New Corp Steel, and I would recommend your entertainment of it strongly.
Okay. As this is a public hearing, is there anyone else that wants to come forward and speak to this in favor of or that may have question to or in opposition? If not, discussion by this council. Any questions, concerns?
I think it's very important that we look at this hard and do it because it's going to help Norfolk get the industry that we need and want, so I think it would be a good thing to do.
Okay. Very good. If nothing else, I will ask for a planning commission report.
The Norfolk Planning Commission held a public hearing at the request of New Corp Corporation to amend the city of Norfolk's comp plan from commercial to agricultural open space to industrial at 2001 Northeast Industrial Highway. New Corp Corporation applied for a zone change from A agricultural to I-2 heavy industrial at that location. This parcel is for the new tubular product industry moving to Norfolk. The planning commission voted eight to zero in approval of the comp plan to amending it from to industrial. And then as well, the Norfolk Planning Commission held a public hearing to consider the zones change from A agricultural to heavy industrial, and they voted, the planning commission recommends approval of the zone change on an eight to zero vote at that location.
Okay. And with that, I will close both of these public hearings and look for consideration of ordinance number 5295 amending the city of Norfolk's comp plan from ag open space to industrial at 2001 Northeast Industrial Highway.
Your Honor, I'd move consideration of ordinance 5295 on first reading.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion with a second. Any discussion at all, further discussion? Okay, Beth, short title.
An ordinance of the city of Norfolk, Madison County, Nebraska, amending the future land use map of the city of Norfolk, Nebraska, providing when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect and providing for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
And with that, I would ask you to please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Ordinance 5295 carries on first reading.
Your Honor, I'd move that we suspend the rules and pass ordinance 5295 on second and third.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion with a second to suspend the rules and pass on second and third. I'm assuming no further discussion, so please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Ordinance 5295 carries on second and third.
And then to further, it would be consideration of ordinance number 5296, amending the zoning district from A ag district to I-2 heavy industrial at 2001 Northeast Industrial Highway.
Your Honor, I'd offer ordinance number 5296 for consideration.
Second.
All right. A motion with a second. Any questions or discussion? If not, Beth, we'll take a short title.
An ordinance of the city of Norfolk, Madison County, Nebraska, amending the zoning district map of the city of Norfolk, Nebraska, providing when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect and providing for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
All right. Please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Ordinance 5296 carries on first reading.
Your Honor, I would move that we suspend the rules and pass ordinance number 5296 on second and third reading.
Second.
Okay. Again, a motion to suspend the rules and pass on second and third. Any discussion? Please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Ordinance 5296 carries on second and third.
All right. And next is a public hearing to receive a report on findings and suggestions from the Economic Development Citizen Advisory Group as required by state statute. I will open the hearing and look to you, Randy.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. This is a requirement of state statute. Cities that have an LB-840 economic development program like we do have to create a citizens' advisory review committee or CARC. The citizens serving on our CARC are Bill Canham, Cindy Morrow, Jim Mangels, Aaron Otten, and Jan Einspar. And I'm also on there as an ex-officio non-voting member. Statutes require that the CARC meet every six months at a minimum and report to the city council their findings and suggestions for improvement, and that's to be done at a public hearing, which is what we're doing now. The CARC met on June 3, and the CARC's report, including their review checklist that they go through every meeting, is included in the agenda packet. There are actually five items on the CARC's June 3 agenda. Some of these are relatively routine that we do every time. The first one was review of the city's economic development fund. Financial statements from November through April will include it in the CARC's agenda. There wasn't any expenditures, and it had over $1.2 million of cash. And we're going to be using that for the Taeos project. They also received an update on the Peterson Ag project. The last time the CARC met, the Peterson Ag attentively selected their site, the old Keaton International Facility, that was undergoing an economic, environmental review, and they've since purchased that facility and they're finishing up renovations. I drove by there today. It looked like they're almost, pretty much, in full-bore operations out there. We're working with Lauren Kuscher from the Nebraska Business Development Council in Wayne. He's packaging their 504 program, and he's going to be including most of the documents we need for our 840 program. And we expect that loan to close probably within the next several months. We also provided an update on the Taeos Tubular Project. February 3, council meeting, the council approved committing $3.6 million of LB-840 funds to that project. At the June 2 meeting, last council meeting, council authorized $2,365,000 of economic development fund bonds for that project, and those bonds closed on June 4. We'll take those proceeds along with the $1.2 million I just mentioned, plus property tax that we got a large, several large months of property tax payments we get about now, and that will provide the funding for the Taeos project along with the funding for the Peterson Ag project. And that, our funding, we plan on going towards the pipeline that is coming in from the east and will serve not only Taeos but be available for other customers in and around Norfolk. And Courtney also gave the CARC a general economic development update, talked about work city staff has been doing to address workforce and housing issues, important items for economic development. And then the final agenda item was consideration of the CARC's findings and suggestions for improvement. And the CARC found that the city's economic development program was operating in compliance with the budget, and the voter-approved economic development plan. And answering questions.
Aside from, were there any suggestions from anyone on...
No, the CARC didn't have any suggestions.
Okay. Their meetings are going to be a little shorter now.
Yeah. After we get all these two projects we got underway, yeah, there won't be a whole lot for them to review because we won't have much money to spend, but...
We took care of that, didn't we, Randy? Any other questions or comments at all? Okay. If not, then I will close the hearing, and we will move on to the next public hearing at the request of Kevin Signer, Off-Road Ranch LLC, for a zoning change from A ag to I-1 light industrial at 2900 Old Highway 8. I'm going to open this public hearing and look for discussion on this and...
I can speak to that.
Okay.
I spoke with the ambulance. Kevin is in the audience tonight, and he's agreed to table this. He'd like to have an opportunity to have the public hearing when other folks can show up. I know we had some interest from the Stanton County Commissioners as well, but they're unable to attend because of the tornado event, so that request was made through them to also consider continuing it or tabling it. So Kevin was fine with that. He had to save his testimony for the next time we bring it off the table. So if the council could do that, that would be great.
I'll make the motion that we table that due to weather until the next opportunity we have to discuss it.
I'll second that.
All right. To the next meeting or... To the next council meeting. Does that sound...
July.
Two weeks? July...
Is that turned to you, Kevin?
What'd you say? July what?
Seven.
Seven? Okay. So it'll be put on the July 7 meeting. Appreciate that, Kevin, very much. That being said, I guess I will close this... No, what we're doing, we need to vote on, I'm sorry, on voting, vote on the tabling of, since there is a motion with a second, that we table until the July 7 meeting. Please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative.
Okay. Stay safe over there, Kevin. Again, thanks for coming in. Next is consideration of ordinance number 5297, amending the zoning...
This is one we need to table.
Say that again. So we have to go through...
We need a table.
Well, didn't we do that? I mean, doesn't that...
We continued the public hearing, but we need to table the ordinance.
We continued the public hearing?
Yes.
Did we?
We continued.
I thought we tabled it.
We can't table a public hearing.
Okay.
If we just could, we could just go back.
Okay. I'm getting my orders from Beth here, who tells me that what we will be doing is we're going to ask for consideration, 5297. Go ahead.
Ask them to table the ordinance. Yes.
We're tabling the ordinance. Okay. We're going to table ordinance 5297, amending the zoning designation as requested. So do I have a motion to do so?
I'll make the motion to table 5297.
And a second?
Second.
All right. I don't think any discussion is needed, so I will ask that you please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Motion to table carries.
All right. Let's try this next one. Public hearing to consider submitting a grant application in the amount of $150,000 to the Nebraska Department of Economic Development for a community development block grant for community revitalization activities. I will open this hearing, and Tom.
I'm Hagan Botham, Economic Development District. This is the standards required public hearing to apply for community development block grants, as it clearly states that the dollars will be used for infrastructure, water, sewer, and also for some single-family housing rental. This is phase two of round three, or what I call phase eight. This is the eighth round of funding going back to 2005. So this should be old news to you folks, and we're just continuing to make improvements to this area. Every three years, we do an update to the study. We get public input in the targeted area, take that input, sit down with the city staff, and decide on what to spend the money on, what's the greatest need. And for this round, we're going to apply for some water main improvements, and as I said earlier, some single-family rental housing. These, they are required matching funds. The city is going to match on the infrastructure, and then the property owners that get involved with the rental will match it with their own dollars on those projects.
Always appreciate your work, Tom. Any questions for him while he stands before us?
What's the opportunity cost?
I tell you what, sir. Please, it's a public hearing. We'd ask that you come forward and state your name and ask your questions.
My name is Rick Whibley.
Hey, Rick, sign in for me, will you, please?
Opportunity cost is equal to $450,000 that you take out of the economy. You're taking $150,000 out of the economy, and you're going to bounce it around with the bureaucrats and stuff and do all your things. Well, I think it's $450,000 opportunity cost that somebody in the future will be able to do a business proposition, build a house, what have you. It's money you're taking away from the future, is what I'm saying. Good day.
Appreciate your comments, Rick. Thanks for being here. Is there anyone else? This is a public hearing. We'd sure like to hear from you. If not, discussion by this group at all? Any questions? All right. Then I will close this hearing, and I will ask for consideration of resolution 2014-17, approving a grant application to the Nebraska Department of Economic Development requesting $150,000 of CBG funds for Phase 2 comprehensive revitalization activities as explained.
Your Honor, I'd move consideration of resolution 2014-17. Second.
Okay. We have a motion with a second. Any discussion at all? If not, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Resolution 2014-17 is adopted.
All right. And the next public hearing is to consider a blighted and substandard designation for the area referred to as East Norfolk Avenue Redevelopment Area for the area generally located south of Benjamin Avenue to just north of Norfolk Avenue along either side of Victory Road. I will open this hearing, and Courtney, you're speaking to this?
Evening, Mayor and Council. Courtney Detlinger, Economic Development Director for the city. This study was conducted by Northeast Nebraska Economic Development District at our request. You'll see in your packets a copy of the BLIGHT study and the area that it's outlining, but it's generally south of Benjamin Avenue, along Victory Road, comes over to the east side of Victory Road just a bit, and then just, text just south of Norfolk Avenue, a long part of this. We've requested this BLIGHT study in order to determine if it meets the statutory criteria. If an area is declared blighted and substandard, that opens up the possibility to utilize tax increment financing as a tool in order to redevelop some of this area. We don't have any projects specifically tied to this at this point, but we're hoping, now that we'll be proceeding with a BLIGHT designation, that we will have some interest in developing this area and redeveloping this area. I'm going to allow Tom Hagan Botham from the district to walk through the BLIGHT study with you and talk about the specific criteria that it meets, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have generally.
Any questions for Courtney? Okay, Tom.
Thank you. Yes, we did this study on the, the map is on page 12 of the study or page 110 of your packet, which outlines the area. In accordance with state statute, a BLIGHT and substandard determination needs to meet two, or at least one of the substandard criteria. In our opinion, it meets two. Delapitation and deterioration, which is explained on page five of the study, also the age or obsolescence, which is also on page five. And then also, the, under the BLIGHT criteria, we feel that this area meets five of the criteria. Number one, substantial number of deteriorated or deteriorating structures, which is outlined on page six. Number two, the existence of defective or inadequate street layout, page seven, is that outlines that information. Unsanitary or unsafe conditions on page seven, deterioration of site or other improvements, number five. And then number 12, two, the average age of the residential or commercial units in the area. They have to be over 40. The average age of the buildings or structures in this area was 48.5 or 48.9 years of age. So in our opinion, that designated area does meet the criteria. As a reminder, you know, it's the area as a whole meets this criteria. Not every single property in that area meets that criteria. I just want to remind the council of that. The process Courtney and I went through to start this process, you know, we send letters to all the property owners in this area, letting them know that we're going to do this. If they have any questions, please call. They have called. We answered those questions. And I also will point out that the vacancy, former councilman, soon-to-be former councilman, I guess, Dale Coy, that was his area. He had some constituents, you know, interested in this process. We actually held an informational meeting right here in this building with some of the property owners out there, and that meeting went very well, and, because it's new to folks, you know, and we explained, you know, that it's the area as a whole, you know, not every single property in this area is blighted or substandard. It doesn't hurt your current valuation or your taxes. It doesn't raise your taxes, and it doesn't lower your taxes. It's just a state, it's a tool built into the state statute which allows tax increment financing as a tool to spur development, as Courtney discussed. So that's all I have, and if there's any questions about anything or the area...
Questions at all?
How many, excuse me, how many acre areas this?
It's a little over 330, 336 acres. And it's, and including this area into the blighted and substandard determination, only 35, and I have to look to Randy, he's, I think only 35% of the city limits can be under blighted and substandard, and by doing this, we're well under that, if I remind you.
Yes, we are.
And then also, I'll point out that once a tax increment financing project is done, typically the bonds go from 10 to 15 years. Once that is done and over with, the city council does have the authority to unBLIGHT an area, once it's completely redeveloped and there's no more use for tax increment financing, then the city council can unBLIGHT that area, which frees up those percentages of acreages if there's other areas to move on to, so...
Okay. Any further questions or discussion?
Not so much question, but comment. I mean, this is a common tool that's, I mean, if you look statewide and as we travel statewide looking at things, that's what other communities are using, and it's a tool that we can't sell ourselves short on that way. It's out there, we need to be using it, so...
Yes, I would agree. A lot of our communities in the 17 counties that we serve utilize this tool to spur development, and that's what it's for, so...
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
Okay. As this is a public hearing, is there anyone else that wants to come and speak to this? Okay. If not, any discussion by this council? Any further discussion or questions? If not, I'm going to look to you, Beth, for a planning commission report.
The Norfolk Planning Commission on June 3, 2014, reviewed the BLIGHT and substandard determination study for area referred to as East Norfolk Area Redevelopment Area. The study was prepared by the Northeast Nebraska Economic Development District. The East Norfolk Avenue area is roughly bordered by Madison County, Madison Avenue from Pine Street to east of Victory Road and north to incorporate a portion of the Metta Ridge development. The Nebraska Community Development Law identifies six substandard factors. Two factors were identified substandard by Northeast Nebraska Economic Development District, the dilapitation, deterioration, and age or obsolescence. The area was identified as having five blighted criteria. Based on the study and its finding, the planning commission recommends declaration of the East Norfolk Area blighted and substandard.
Okay. And with that, we will close the public hearing, and I would ask for consideration of resolution 2014-18, declaring the area generally located south of Benjamin Avenue to just south of Norfolk Avenue along Victory Road, referred to as East Norfolk Avenue Redevelopment, as blighted and substandard.
Your Honor, I'd like to move consideration of resolution 2014-18.
Second, Beth.
All right. We have a motion with a second. If no further discussion, I would ask that you please vote.
All councilmen voting in the affirmative. Resolution 2014-18 is adopted.
Okay. And under the regular agenda tonight, we're looking for consideration of approval of an agreement with Big Bang Boom Incorporated, a Nebraska nonprofit corporation, and J&amp;M Displays Incorporated, an Iowa corporation, allowing the use of Skyview Park for various activities to celebrate the Fourth of July... activities to celebrate the Fourth of July, including, but not limited to, a firework display on Saturday, July 5, 2014.
Your Honor, I'll introduce the agreement.
Okay. How about some discussion on this? Who's?
Sure. This is a continuation of Big Bang Boom, which, as you know, we've been doing for years in our community, wonderful event. As we go through these agreements, we look at ways to protect the community from, you know, additional liabilities that are out there, and Big Bang Boom has been at the table with that throughout most of this process. One thing that's slightly different is last year, they started helicopter rides, and this year, they wanted to continue having helicopter rides at the event. We've, we've been in discussions with Big Bang Boom, with Don Waznisky, and he was going to be here, but I suspect he's.
He's right here.
Oh, there he is. There he is. Okay, great, so.
Up from underneath the chair there, Don.
Yeah, Don can speak to this directly as well. But this year, again, they want to continue on with the helicopters, and, and Don and I visited last week, and we talked about the insurance requirements there, and we're requiring the $5 million worth of insurance for the helicopters. And Don advised me that the vendor was going to have that, so we're working up an agreement with the vendor in particular. One thing we, you know, just to have some clarity for, for the council and for the community on our, on our insurance requirements, we got to have a relationship with, with the vendors in order to have the appropriate insurance, protect the city of Norfolk, so we do that through small contracts or agreements like the one in front of you tonight. We did that with Big Bang Boom. We do that, J&amp;M Fireworks also signs the Big Bang Boom Agreement, and that's just to make sure the relationship is, connects the city of Norfolk with them as well. So, we intend to do the same thing with the helicopter vendor as well. So, that'd be a kind of a separate relationship you'll see with the helicopter vendor as we move forward, and I believe that's in process, and Don can speak to it directly if he chooses to. But I just want to let you guys know that's what your staff's working on in risk management. Sometimes you get, you, in risk management, you wonder what's too much, too little, and you know, we're always, you know, it's kind of like Goldilocks, it's either hot, too hot, too cold, and hardly ever just right, but at the end of the day, the city of Norfolk is different than private business, it's different than many things. We're a community, and we're going to be here for the long term, at least I hope so. Our, our existence goes on in forever and ever, at least by design. So, that's why we try to do risk management to the best of our ability to protect the resources that are, that the mayor and council is entrusted with. Any questions with that? I'd sure be happy to answer them or try to answer them. Maybe Don has something to add.
Okay. Any questions from you, Don, at all?
No.
Okay. Counsel, any questions, any comments? If not, then I would ask for your vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative.
Okay, and then we will move on to consideration of approval of amendment, addendum number one to amendment number 22 with Black and Beach for Engineering Services for U.S. Highway 81 Sewer Service Extension Project resulting in an additional $28,500.
Your Honor, I move consideration of addendum number one to amend, amendment number 22.
It is a little punk twist, isn't it, there?
Easy for you to say.
Do I have a second to that?
Second.
All right, we have a motion with a second. Dennis, are we going to look to you for some discussion?
Yes, I can start the discussion here. As we were developing this project south of the river, we had a couple of opportunities for public input. As a result of that input, we ended up moving the lift station further south onto the west side of the, of the highway, which necessitated some additional regulatory work with the federal highway, not the federal highway, but federal aeronautics and aviation area. We've run into some areas, needed to do a little research on the Super Sun Fund site related to COVIDian to make sure that if we dug through those areas, we weren't going to have any issues. Moving the, to the other side of the highway required some additional geotechnical investigation that wasn't done the original time through. We also looked at expanding the area of the, of the district being considered. There was, looked at an area south of Sherwood Road that was discounted and not completed, but we did look at an area going additional 500 feet east on Sherwood Road that we included in the area, and also a request to extend the sewer on Benita Drive that was also included. And then, that necessitated some plan revisions that are all rolled into this change order. If you have any specific questions, I would sure try to answer them.
Counsel, any specific questions or concerns or comments or? Okay. If no further discussion then, or I would look for your vote, consideration of 2014-18. Whoops, did I say that wrong?
I might have put the addendum.
Yep, my fault. Let me correct that. Consideration of addendum number one to amendment number 22.
All council members voting in the affirmative.
Okay, and next is consideration of accepting resignation of Ward One Council Member Dale Coy effective June 6, 2014. Is there somebody in it? Huh? Is there anybody that's going to make that motion?
I hate to make the motion, but I think I'm going to.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Dale, we'd sure give you opportunity to come and speak to that, if you would, please.
Do we have to accept it?
You can do whatever you want to do.
We can fire him.
Well, I guess, as most of you know, I had an opportunity offered me from my family and, and for, as a quality of life issue, after 24 years on rotating shift, 12 hours on concrete, I put my name in the hat and was offered a position with the city of Norfolk, City Parks. And it's something that I had to chew on pretty deep because I, I really cherished being a part of this team. And I don't say the team as just the elected officials, but also staff and the support that they've given me in the last eight years. I just can't say enough, I've done a lot of reflecting the last couple of weeks and just think of the road and, and how fast it's went, and, and history will be the judge of if the decisions we made were good or bad. You just hope at that point in time that you take the information that's given you and you make a decision that you can sleep on, and I feel I've done that in my eight years on the council. Father's Day hit hard, you know, the process that's going to take place to replace me is kind of how I, I got active in this. When Councilman Lashawski resigned, I submitted my application for Ward One City Council, and subsequently, I ran for election in the next election year, and my daughter was nine years old and my son was seven. And those two and myself and my wife walked Ward One, all of Ward One, knocked on every door in Ward One, and that memory I'll take with me forever. Because now I have a 19-year-old that's soon to be a sophomore at Carney, and I have a soon-to-be 17-year-old that will be a junior at Norfolk High. So, those memories I'll carry with me forever. But other than that, I just want to say thank you to all of you guys, and I just, I shared with the mayor before, we had one, one retreat in particular that is probably one of the most dynamic meetings that I've ever been in in my life, where we made five goals as our top goals, and we made 10 goals as a council. Knock on wood with the completion of the gas line, I think we've accomplished all 10 of those goals. And that's something at the time that I didn't think I'd see in my lifetime, so it's pretty amazing. The road's been amazing, and I thank all of you.
Well, on behalf of this community area, let me tell you, Dale, you've been a godsend to this council, too. I appreciate the time and the attention you gave to me on a lot of the stuff that certainly I had no understanding of. So, thank you for your time and for everything that you have given, and certainly, we're going to see a lot of you, though, right here, yeah, part of city staff, so proud to have you. Thank you.
Dale, I'd like to say, being a rookie four years ago, you gave a lot of sound advice, and being on some subcommittees with you and, and different things, I know we didn't always agree on some things, but I've never been around somebody who made himself so informed of the issues that he was dealing with. It impressed me every time, and you're leaving some huge shoes, or shoes to fill, so thanks for all your hard work.
Thank you.
And Dale, I want to echo that as well. I came on, you know, about four years ago, too, and you made that transition process just very comfortable for me, and I know for some of the other new guys that got on. I'll always appreciate your ability to look at both sides of the issue and to articulate both sides of that issue as well. And you caused some great debate, and always with a smile on your face, and always with the positive thought ahead, and I appreciate your service. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Rob.
You bet.
Okay. Dale, thank you very much. And with that, are you ready to vote, counsel? Please do.
All council members voting in the affirmative.
Okay, and let me just advise, as Dale said, in the past, we've had a vacancy once that I've been a part of, and the process is notice will be given of the vacancy in our local paper, then anyone from that ward will have seven days after the regular meeting at which said notice of vacancy was presented, file with the city administrator a written statement of intent to be considered, along with a personal resume. And then the mayor and the city council will personally do some interviews to all those who have, to, who have applied to fill the vacancy prior to the special meeting. And then, within two weeks after the regular meeting and the notice of vacancy, a special meeting of the city council, at which time, the mayor submits the name of a qualified elector of the city to fill the vacancy for the balance of the unexpired term. Beth, say that in layman's terms. When, when will this happen? I'm getting a little confused on these special meetings, and I don't want to give anybody a incorrect date here.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Seven days from tonight, which would be the 23rd, is my calendar here, is when, when the submissions have to be made of anyone wanting to be considered. The nomination of that person or the, from you submitted to the council, that has to be done no later than June 30. That's the two-week timeframe from tonight.
Okay, so those interviews have to happen quickly, then?
If you're going to hold the interviews, yes.
We are. Okay. All right. Very good. All right, so with that being said, I just wanted to clarify, and if you have any questions, I suggest you call the city office and ask to talk to Beth Deck. Any questions on putting your name in? So, that being said, we'll move on to consideration of approval to award a contract to Rutledge Construction Incorporated for the Southwest Sanitary Sewer Interceptor Phase One Project Alternate Number One in an amount of $1,380,512.35.
Your Honor, I would move consideration of award of the contract to Rutledge Construction Southwest Sanitary Sewer in a separate Phase One.
I'll second that.
Okay, we do have a motion, and we do have a second, and we have Mark in front of us, who will advise us.
All right. Mayor and council, I'll just give a quick overview of the project. This is a project that's basically going to be the first piece of the puzzle, taking sewer south of the river. It'll consist of approximately a quarter mile of 15-inch sanitary sewer from Tazuka Road to Monroe Avenue along the highway, then from there, it's a 24-inch sewer along Monroe to south on Fifth Street, where we're eventually tying into an existing 36-inch line at Fourth and Jackson. This project consists of decommissioning two lift stations along the route, so that'd be some less maintenance costs once this is constructed. Kirk Michael was the design engineer on the project, and on this project, we bid three alternative materials. The first alternate was clay, the second alternate was plastic, and the third alternate was a fiberglass-plastic combination, depending on the size of the pipe. Rutledge was a little bit on all three common, or all three alternates. Consulting engineer along with staff recommend award for alternate number one for that amount of 1.38 million. You'll notice that, that it is slightly higher than alternate two, which is the PVC, the plastic alternate. However, we feel there's both long-term and short-term benefits to choosing clay over plastic, especially for an interceptor line, which is a main, main line for conveying wastewater to our water pollution control plant. Clay is essentially inert to strong chemicals, has over 100 years of proven experience, and there's improvements being made on the weak points of clay, such as, you know, the joints used to be a weak point, and there have been significant improvements on that. So, you know, with that proven history and, and those being inert to strong chemicals, that's, those are big pluses for a line like this. The soil characteristics in the area are much more favorable to clay than it is to a plastic or a flexible material, which require, you know, and so those, due to those soil characteristics, it requires a lot more complex bedding requirements, which requires a lot more oversight, and, and that kind of turns into some of your short-term benefits, which, you know, clay requires essentially half of the trench width. Clay will take a four-foot trench width versus a plastic will take an eight-foot trench width. You have to get new bedding material in for plastic as opposed to clay, you can pretty much use what's there. So, it'll go into a, you know, combination of using that material, less width, resulting in a faster project, less disruptions to the public, and less disruption to the property owners. Any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
What's the life expectancy then of clay versus the, the plastic?
Clay is essentially, if it's put in right, I mean, there's, there's clay that's in the ground for over 100 years. Theoretically, it lasts for, uh, plastic, it's, it's inert to, to majority chemicals, it does lose its moduluses of elasticity over time, which is basically its, its strength. You know, it's, it's not as, it's only been in the ground for 50 years, so there's still, no, no, the real extent of it. It's more, you know, it's 50 years versus over 100 years on the proven history. So, it's hard to say.
Are we talking different thicknesses then, also, Mark?
Well, yeah, plastic is a lot thinner material, clay's a lot thicker material, but the diameter of the pipe is the same. Clay's a rigid material, plastic is a flexible, you know, if you don't compact it right, it can warp and, and move a little bit more, so, you know, I don't know if that answers your question. It's hard to put a number on it. It all depends on if it's properly bedded, which, like I said, the bedding requirements are a lot less stringent for the clay than the plastic, so that'll help the life expectancy in a better project result.
Yeah, we had some of the same questions come up, Dick, in the subcommittee meeting, and I was kind of blown away by the, the clay pipe and what it can do, and how, you know, Dennis kind of went over some stuff, and so did Mark, but really kind of got me when you talked about how Omaha is now in the process of replacing a lot of mains, and they're going with clay, you know, and so I think that's a testament to this product, so.
Right, yeah, there's a lot of big cities that are now only specking clay. It's a little more expensive upfront, but due to longevity and the amount of disruption compared to plastic, it seems to be a favorable material.
Thank you.
Good question. Nick, anyone else?
Mark, during this project, will there be a big inconvenience to property owners and stuff? Like, will they dig up a mile of pipe and lay it, and two, three days later, put it back in?
No, they're, they're not going to dig it all up. They'll, they'll dig and fill as they go.
Okay.
I mean, there'll be a, you know, stretch where you'll have a day or two of the trench, and then there'll also be the inconvenience of the time it takes to pour back driveways and, you know, other miscellaneous items like that, but they, they should generally dig as.
So, there won't be a trench, continuous trench open for a long period of time?
No, I wouldn't, so.
Mark, you may have mentioned it, but how long do you anticipate the project will take?
Um, I'm not.
Probably four to six months of actual construction. We're, I think they'll probably start this fall and then carry on, have a break and carry on into the spring. It's going to have to be dewatered, so some of that'll dictate when they can work and when they can't.
Okay.
We're looking at Monroe that will be.
We're looking at Monroe that will be open to local traffic at all times, we told the contractor he can have it closed to through-traffic, there'll be disruption there, but, you know, they'll, should be able to clean up their, clean up behind themselves, you know, on a fairly routine basis, but there's quite a bit of material that's gonna have to be moved, and they'll be using a lot of the road, so.
Yep.
It'll be one-lane traffic back and forth, you know, you'll kind of have to wait for somebody to come and go, so, that's why we're hoping that the through-traffic finds alternate routes, and I think they probably will.
And add to that, the major crossings of the highway in the west end on Monroe, that's all being bored underneath the road, so the disruption will be further away from the highway.
All right, thank you.
Okay, any other questions, comments? All right, then I would ask that you please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative.
And next is consideration of awarding a contract to Industrial Process Technology to install grip pumping and washing equipment at the water pollution control plant for the base bid amount of $252,639, and authorizing the mayor to sign any and all contracts and documents related to the project. Again, I would like a motion for consideration. Do I have one?
Your Honor, remove consideration awarding a contract to Industrial Process Technology.
Second.
And we have a second. Todd?
Todd took off for the SID meeting, so.
Okay.
I'll answer any questions you might have, this is the low bid that we're recommending, it's a company that hasn't worked in Norfolk before, but their references checked out well, this is a project Todd's been working on for some time, we prebid the actual equipment so it would, made sure it would fit in the space we had available, so it's just time to move on.
Okay, I appreciate that, Dennis. Any questions by the council at all? I'm sure Todd will be right on top of it, so with that said, I would ask for your vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative.
Okay, and next is consideration of Resolution 2014-19 approving the final plat and the accompanying subdivision agreement for Country Club Estates Third Edition.
I'll offer Resolution 2014-19, Your Honor.
Second that, Your Honor.
Okay, we have a motion with a second discussion. Mr. Johnson, looks like you're ready to come forward and talk with us.
Good evening, I'm Dick Johnson, and I am representing the owners and developers of Country Club Estates Third Edition. This is a tract of land that fronts on Benjamin Avenue on the north side, between Benjamin and Country Club Road. Country Club Village bought this from the Norfolk Country Club, and is in the process of subdividing it, they want to keep approximately north 130 feet of the property, and the remainder of it will be sold to Landico Two, which is a limited liability company, which Paul Medelman is a member of. Anyway, everything was going along fairly well, I guess, for a subdivision, and we got to the subdivision agreement, and basically we had four issues that needed resolving. The first was the engineering department wanting an easement across the middle of the property for the drainage, which is basically where the drainage is now, and Mr. Medelman, who was gonna eventually own the property, saying, "No, that causes me problems down the road, I don't want to do it." We worked back and forth with Dennis, and came up with the language in the second paragraph of the grading information on page three of the agreement, which basically Mr. Medelman committed to giving an easement when the, when he knew what he was gonna develop, and Mr. Smith saying, "Okay, I'll wait till then," so that seemed to work out pretty good. The next issue we ran into is the BMPs, which, that's partly BMPs for best management practices, part of your storm drain ordinance that you passed a year and a half ago, and part of that is, you know, we're all kind of feeling our way through it, it's a little bit new, and we're not quite sure how we want to deal with it. The thing I've heard, not only from Mr. Medelman, but other clients, is that they want something fairly concrete that they're gonna commit to in the subdivision agreement. Not, I'm not sure how to put it, you know, the city basically was happy to say, "Okay, we want you to commit that when the time comes that you develop a lot, you'll build a BMP and maintain it as required by city code." The developers saying, "Hey, wait a minute, what are you gonna require me to build?" And it's, you know, I can see both sides on that. But anyway, we worked through that language again with Dennis, and got to the point that something was acceptable to, between the two parties, and got that one off the table, and that was, that's the third and fourth paragraphs in the grading in the subdivision The next item, or the next two items that I'm gonna discuss, we haven't been able to get to agreement yet, and I guess that's why I'm here tonight, right behind the wild birds and animals, or right ahead of them, excuse me, on your agenda.
Well, I'm looking at you as being the negotiator, so, you know, you were doing really well with one and two, what happened with three and four?
I couldn't negotiate my way onto an earlier agenda.
Did you ask?
Huh?
Did you ask?
No, I didn't.
Okay, that's part of the problem, Dick, go ahead.
Okay, the next concern issue we ran into was the water supply. Basically, part of the subdivision agreement always requires that we tell how we're gonna serve the lots with sewer and water. On occasions when that particular lot needs to be assessed per city code, we're required to put in the subdivision agreement, there'll be a $5 per front foot charge for connection to the city water, and that's the way it's been for many, many years. What we noticed here, in your city code, I don't know if you can flip to it, or if you need to, but Section 2611 talks about connection charges, and basically says that no building or premises will be connected to the water unless he pays a fee set forth in Section 2.5. Section 2.5 is basically the section of the code that lists all of the, you know, anything that the city wants to charge you for is in Section 2.5 somewhere, ambulance rides, sewer connections, to what have you. Anyway, the problem that we see here, for the water, it talks about a $5 per front foot fee, but it says extension or alteration of existing water connection. And Mr. Medelman is asking me, "Well, where's my existing water connection? I don't have one." This doesn't apply, I'm happy to pay the $95 water connection fee that's mentioned above it, and the, where, I think it was a $30 fee or something to turn the water on at some point in time. Just as a comparison, on the sewer connection charge, which is Section 2648, which basically says the same thing and references Section 2-5 again, it says connection to alteration or extension of existing sewer lines per front foot of property, $5. So, the sewer seems to be a lot clearer than the water, at least, you know, based on what has been done in the past. And that's one of the issues that we haven't gotten to agreement on. The last one is under miscellaneous, in, it's number two, which this language has been in subdivision agreements for years, developers agree to hold the city of Norfolk harmless from any liability and claims arising out of and relative to the development of this subdivision, to and including, but not limited to, and this is the part that Mr. Medelman would like, left out, the determination of wetlands. Then it goes on as defined in the Federal Clean Water Act. If we're holding you harmless for the whole act, well, basically for everything, not, you know, not even over and above the Clean Water Act, basically, we're holding you harmless for the determination of wetlands, just because it's part of the Clean Water Act. Is, you know, and the question is, why does that one have to be spelled out specifically? And that's, that's the other one that we haven't been able to get agreement to, and like I say, that's why I'm here tonight, and I'll try to answer any questions you have.
How much frontage is there?
Oh, good question.
Sorry.
About.
Probably 200, 250 feet, I'm not 100% sure, Shane.
That's it.
I was gonna say, any questions for him while we have him in front of us here? I wish I could tell you, I have all the answers for you, Dick, but I certainly am not exactly sure what is being requested, I can, I hear on the last comment that you are, what I'm hearing you say, the way I'm understanding it, is you're, we're more or less putting something in there that you believe is already covered, is already specified by the...
Well, the subdivision agreement that you have in front of you, that you passed your motion on, doesn't have the discussion about the five-foot water connection fee in the agreement, which is fine with us, obviously. However, it does have the reference to the determination of wetlands, which we would like removed. So I don't know if you, it would seem to me, you'd probably have to take a couple of different actions on it, or approve it the way it is, I don't care, but, well, I do care, but I just...
I was gonna say, I don't think you probably are standing before us because you don't care, but...
Sorry, I was just thinking, should we try to hit one, hit each one of these one at a time, I mean?
Well, can somebody answer the wetlands, because I kind of get that.
I kind of get it, but I also kind of get that it hasn't been determined what you're going to agree to, you don't have any...
It hasn't been determined between us and Dennis.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, we, Dennis and I and Paul got to, yes, a couple of things, but we've got two that we haven't yet, and that's why we're here.
That's hanging out there somewhere.
You guys are the learned, wise people that are gonna tell us what to do.
The wise one resigned, he said.
Too late for that. Well, it's just, you know, I guess we feel like, you know, Dennis and I and Paul have tried, and we've got as far as we can, but, you know, it's, from our standpoint, you know, Paul probably needs to hear either, "Yeah, you're right, Paul, we'll accept this," or, "No, we don't think as a city council we can accept it." Dennis, on the other hand, probably needs to hear, "Dennis, you're doing fine, but we're gonna change on this one," or, "We aren't gonna change," I don't know, I mean, he can talk for himself.
Sure.
Okay, any other questions?
Question for you, Dick, the dwelling situation, though, that's, that element or that item has been the same for how many years?
Uh, I would guess somewhere in the neighborhood of 20 or 25, I don't remember when it first went in, but it's been...
Just generally 20 years, and then in that time period, we haven't really had an issue with it, with it being in there, that it's created a problem, and so my, my general gut feeling is why we would, what, you know, what makes this such a special condition that we'd want to pull it on out?
Well, the only, the issue that Mr. Medelman raises is redundancy, I guess the flipside of this is that, how many times have you had to behold, you had to have been held harmless in the last 20 years on a subdivision development? An actual claim of liability or something?
But, and again, no, it's, it's that one time that it happens, that, that, you know, that we don't have that in place, that suddenly the citizens of Norfolk start bearing more consequences for something that should really be the developer, I mean, the developer is one that's gonna make the, essentially, the majority of the bucks off of this thing, so I see it as, you know, just a recipe for a slight bit of insurance for the citizenry of Norfolk, and I guess I believe it really needs to stay in.
Well, we're not asking you to take out the whole hold harmless clause, just the three words that have to do with the wetlands, you know, and all we're saying there is that you're not giving up anything because it's part of the Clean Water Act.
So you're saying it's one and the same?
It's, the Clean Water Act talks about the delineation of wetlands and mitigation and everything you could possibly want to know about wetlands, or not want to know, and, yeah, so we're saying, you know, basically, if you're being held harmless from the Clean Water Act, in effect, you're being held harmless from anything that could arise from the determination of wetlands.
And again, my question is, so what if, what if it is redundancy? What's the problem with redundancy? I see no problem there, so I'm saying, okay, so, I mean, it's, it's just redundant, but it's, if the client's already acknowledging that that's in the Clean Water Act, and we're just stating it in a redundant process, what's the problem there then?
Is the redundancy based more because of the Clean Water Act? I mean, you know, the Clean Water Act is relatively new compared to this initial hold harmless agreement, correct? So if that was in there for 20, 30 years, is, has the verbiage changed because we've added more to the Clean Water, what's the Clean Water Act?
Well, the Clean Water Act's been around a long time.
But it's amped up.
Seventy-four.
Twenty-two, seventy-four.
I think the Clean Water Act, it might go back to 1968, but I'll give you a little history where this specific part of that language came from. We had a hold harmless agreement generally in our subdivision agreements for a long time. There was a development that occurred in the Omaha area, where the engineer went in, designed the thing, left two or three acres of wetlands on the plans, don't, don't do anything with. The developer goes to the grader, says, "Fill in that corner, I don't want to deal with that," he did it, US government comes back, and they, the city, the developer, the grader, they all got fined out of the thing. So we added the language to our subdivision agreement that specifically says, "Developer, you are responsible for delineation of wetlands, you are responsible for making sure that you deal with those correctly, should you not do that, you are still gonna hold us harmless," and that's where the language came from, it's probably been in the subdivision agreements for 15 or 20 years, it's been there a long time. Wetlands is kind of a hot topic, it's one that kind of gets things excited, and the Corps of Engineers, who oversees that program, have just put us in a vise, and it just kept twisting it, every year it gets more stringent, just tougher and tougher and tougher, so that's why the language is there, and I think I offered, Dick, one of the options was to provide us a wetland delineation on the front end, and we'll remove that language, so.
As your negotiator, do you like that opportunity?
Uh, not right now, no.
Okay. So, if we don't come to a negotiated agreement here, then what is your request? I mean, at this point, this council can certainly go forward and make the decision of what's before us tonight, but I do want to hear you out, I mean...
Well, it's fine, no, I've pretty much said everything I've got to say.
Okay.
I guess the request is just, you know, what's this council, council gonna say on these two items? these two items?
Well, I, you know, I guess we'll all see when the vote comes forward, Dick, but-
We still have another issue, though, we have number three.
Yeah.
So we should talk, maybe move from this part and go to talk to number, about number three? Is that right?
That's fine. You guys are gonna have to ask the questions, 'cause I'm a little confused on that piece there, so go forth.
So, now, you stated there was no, there's no where, no, no place to hook up to water or sewer, or is it just water?
No, there's water and sewer available out there. The, 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 basically, on, on what you've done on the, the front foot connection charge in the past is based on, if, if the sewer's been assessed, there's no connection charge. In effect-
Oh, sure.
In effect, the price has already been paid for once by the owner of that property or his predecessor, so there's no connection charge. Uh, and for instance, on Lot One of the addition, which fronts up on, uh, Country Club Road, there's no connection charge for either the sewer or the water, because it has already been paid for. Lot Two is the southerly lot, which Mr. Melton will be buying, which fronts on Benjamin Avenue, and, uh, engineering went through and found that there had been no assessment for the water line in front of this property, uh, and so they came back and said, you got the five dollar a foot connection charge that you have to pay us per city code, and, like I told you, we went and looked in the city code, and, uh, I'm sure we agree with that.
Dennis, can you speak to that for us?
Yeah, the city code, Section twenty-six eleven B says, no building or premise shall be connected unless the owner shall, if such premises pays the fee as set forth in Section two-point-five of this code per front foot of the property upon which the building or premises is located. If you go to Section two-point-five, there's a section that says it's five dollars per foot. Dick is objecting to the short description that was added in Section two-dash-five when that, when we moved the five dollars per foot from twenty-six eleven to Section two-point-five, and he says it talks about an existing water line. The only thing, you know, Section twenty-six eleven B says that you either pay, you have to pay the connection fee based on the front foot fee, the front foot fee in the sections of two-point-five, the only one you'll find in there is five dollars per foot.
And Dennis, is it true that we've had a longstanding history of charging for those assessments, that they haven't been collected in the past?
Yeah, and I think that five dollar fee is probably the amount was there when I started with the city, so probably grossly understated, but that's what it is.
Counsel, you got any?
How long ago was that line put in?
That line was actually put in before I got here, too.
Oh, my God.
We should probably raise it to ten bucks, then.
Not part of the discussion tonight, we aren't, Dave.
And the reason it was, you know, I just popped a drawing up there. The reason, the reason it wasn't assessed is, is that if you look at this drawing, uh, the river was moved when they built the, took out, right under where it says Avenue, there used to be a bridge there, and when they replaced the bridge, they moved it over to where the, uh, water you can see is connected on the north and the south side of the, of the, of Benjamin Avenue. So, that area was a dead man's area at that point in time, wasn't assessed when the project was put in. That's the area that is where the connection to the main would be, would occur for that lot. The river's been filled in on both sides of Benjamin Avenue over the years. The area on the south side where it's set in between there is where Burger King sets. Little coffee shop can't be too far from the old river.
And, and why was it not assessed at that time, thirty years ago?
It was, uh, dead man's land that really, at the, till they filled in the river, it was an unbuildable property.
Okay, all right.
There wasn't enough space to, to support anything.
And it was unbuildable property, and it was put in anyway?
The line was put in, it wasn't assessed. The line, the water line extended from-
So the water line was-
The water line extended from, from Riverside East all the way out to about the entrance to the college, and then north to Flex May, where Flex May sets today.
Okay.
Sure? Go ahead.
Essentially, if, if this were, you know, if we were putting the water line in right now, that piece of property would be assessed, that footage, frontage, price.
Yes, it would, right.
So, uh, and that's not reflective in this agreement that we have here right now?
Correct.
Should be added.
Clint, did you have?
Well, I think that's exactly the, the point. You're talking about two issues, I think, that in the one, um, as to the first one that Nick talked about, which was the last one that he mentioned, the, the item number four, the hold harmless, I mean, you have before you an agreement that has that in there, so you could either approve it or modify it. As to the, the, uh, the water hookup fee, that's not talked about in here, is it?
It's not in the subdivision agreement that's in front of them, it would be, need to be added to that subdivision agreement. I'm not sure why Dick chose to give me a-
You got one, you did one out, and it's kinda confusing.
I understand that, and I'm not sure why Dick chose to give it, us the subdivision agreement that way. But that's the, that's what we've got here.
I think Dick touched on one thing when he talked about the birds and the wild animals with the wetlands, he's now forgetting about them, so he needs to maybe get these both together and then maybe reintroduce it to us or something, so that we're all on the same page and not half and half.
Paul? Newt?
Well, all, all I'm doing is reading and interpreting, so, for example, the, the fees and that stuff, I'm just reading your code and interpreting that in, how I see it, but, uh, I don't know what the deal was in Omaha, if there was a hold harmless agreement in that fellow's subdivision agreement or not, but there, there's a hold harmless in here, and I just didn't feel that it was necessary to go on and, and list, create a list of, of things that are included in the Federal Clean Water Act, the water quality permitting in the Nebraska Department of Environmental Quality, I didn't know why we were doing that, and I didn't think it was the city's, has, uh, I don't think the city has any regulations over wetlands, that they can require me to, uh, you had mentioned that require me to, uh, provide him with the delineation, I don't think that's, you can do that, can you? Prior to the subdivision agreement?
It was a offer to get to a negotiated settlement, um, you know.
But it's not a code requirement to provide a delineation, and that's what I was-
No, all we're doing is trying to protect the citizens of Norfolk from-
Exactly, that's what the-
From this thing, and the wetlands have been a hot topic, and whether the folks in, in the Omaha area had a hold harmless or not, Omaha or Ralston or whichever one of those towns down there did get a fine from the federal government related to that, and it had to do with wetland delineation and filling wetlands inappropriately and some of those things.
I think, Paul, the way I see that is it just gives clarification, so-
Well, then why don't we submit the whole Water Quality Act as part of this, then, instead of just one little piece out of it?
I don't know. I, you know, again-
You can't boil in water, you can't do a lot of, a lot of things, so it just seems to me that the requirements, not only for wetlands, but everything, are becoming more strict, that, uh, the Federal Clean Water Act, the, the, the hold harmless agreement that we're providing, Dick wasn't, but, for your information, Dick wasn't supposed to put the wetlands in there. That's why we're dealing with it, if you wanna know the truth. I, I've asked that from the beginning, and it wasn't, uh, slipped by. I would ask you to, uh, if you have to vote or whatever on that, I, I would like that to be re, uh, to be stricken from there, the wetlands. And then the second issue was the fees, and when I was going in to see how much things were gonna cost us and do some budgeting and whatnot, and I look at the twenty-sixth, or Section twenty-six eleven, I believe, and it does say you need to re, uh, pay per front foot based on Section two-point-five, so I go to two-point-five, and the water is for an extension or alteration of existing water connection, and I do not have an existing water connection. And then you go to the sewer description, and, uh, it's the same, provides the same verbiage, but adds connection to in front of it. There's a clear, clear difference between the two descriptions for water and sewer, and that's what I was saying, why, the only thing it says that I have to do is the ninety-five dollars, I believe, and the thirty-dollar hookup. I mean, maybe your code's been wrong for twenty-five years, I don't know. Am I, and I just caught it? I don't know, but I would like that to be stricken and not be responsible for that.
Mr. Melton, if this were, if you were going up and a new water line was being laid in across the front footage of you as a developer and stuff like that, you've, you pay front footages for sewer indoor water, similar to what you would be assessed, uh, like on our earlier discussions where we've talked about the stuff south of town, correct? That's, that's a normal development situation.
If I was a developer putting in water and sewer, I'd be paying for the whole thing myself.
No, if, if it were going across in front of you that way, not into the property, but across the front side of you.
This is an existing water line, yeah?
This was, uh, probably, the, probably the clarification is an existing water line that was never assessed to the property, to the front footage of the property.
It wasn't around when that was, I don't know what-
But that's-
Property was, I don't know who said it was dead or why it's dead property. It's probably dead 'cause the county owned it?
Well, there was, the piece of property that was available to be used, when you got the setbacks, you couldn't get a building in there because it was all river. You know, this is a piece of property, the only, I mean, this has been filled in over the years, which becomes part of the property that you-
Yeah, I, but I read your code, I mean, I'm just reading what it says here.
There-
Have you read it?
From what I've been informed is that there is a couple interpretations of that, and as I see this, I, I see that we have a, a utility that's running out in front of a piece of property, that, that, you know, the citizens deserve to be reimbursed for what the assessment fees weren't assessed at that time, and it hasn't really changed, so it's, it's typically a development situation, so.
That's a interpretation of it, I guess, that it doesn't say that, Jim.
And, and like that, that'd be great.
So I'd like you to vote on that, I guess, I don't believe it says it, I don't believe I should be responsible for it.
Paul, would you be open to table in this?
Pardon me?
Table in this, so we can get some more clarification to us?
Ron wants to, but-
I mean, there's two issues here that-
We're trying to buy this property from Ron and the Country Club, and they're, they're, they don't have a lot of, of, uh, budget money for this, they're trying to survive.
Are you under any time constraints to get this done in the next couple of weeks?
The reason I ask is that we could, we could have a little more information, 'cause you've gotta-
Clarification on this code that you're referring to, because I think that's part of our problem.
Kinda like Counsel and Faust said, too, there's, there's some things in here we vote to keep, and some things we might vote to throw out.
A thousand dollars, I'm not arguing that.
Hey, we understand, Paul.
It's not a big amount, but I'm just saying, that's not what it says.
Okay, but let us-
I'm just thinking, we need to get it on, maybe rewrite the agreement, get one, one agreement to look at with the things that you want or not.
Very, are, are you agreeable to-
I mean, I think that'd be-
You know, I guess you can table, if you, you obviously can do what you wanna do, but, you know, it's been our standard practice to, to do it this way for many years, and the assessment costs there are appropriate, they haven't been assessed, the community at large, your taxpayers have paid for it over the years, it's a normal practice process.
Well, I think the question is, Shane, what we would like to do is be able to address his concern about correct writings of the code, and I think-
So, okay.
Okay, so if-
Well, it, just a point, you know, we have, you know, I'm in the building of construction, and I, the code officials come out every day to us, and-
Show the code.
Here's the words, and that's what it says, and that's what it means, so.
That's fair, that's fair.
Do we have to comply with those?
Yeah, sure.
Are you making a motion?
I would make the motion.
I'd second that.
We have a motion with a second to table, then, Resolution twenty-fourteen dash nineteen. Um, I think we've had plenty of discussions, so I'm gonna ask that you vote on it.
All council members voting in the affirmative, motion to table carries.
Okay, and next is consideration of Ordinance five-two-nine-eight, amending Section four-dash-five of the city code, the keeping of wild birds or animals to update reference to the Nebraska statutes that has, that have been relocated. So who would like to introduce this ordinance for me?
I'll introduce this ordinance, Mayor.
Second that.
All right, we have a motion with a second discussion. Who's, is it?
Can I explain this?
Yeah, please.
You can sure try.
Here, here, we had a, I don't know what's going on in the, you're always kinda wondering about the moon and whatever, but a week or two ago, um, we had two or three calls about alligators and reptiles and the like, which, in order to answer the call, I went and read Section four-dash-five, which talks about wild birds or animals, and basically what that statute, what that ordinance says is that there aren't any requirements in Norfolk that are different than what is required by the state of Nebraska. So if you have a particular type of animal or bird that needs a permit from the game and parks, then this just says that you have to do that. In, in saying that, the Section four-dash-five references some provisions in the Nebraska statutes that, um, when I went and looked at them to respond to the, the caller, what I found was that, uh, the state of Nebraska had reorganized their statutes and moved a couple of the things which were referred to by section, in Section four-dash-five, and they didn't give us a memo, and I didn't read that. So having read that, this is basically a housekeeping item that would refer to the proper statutes that are in the code now, but have been relocated and remunerated.
Okay. Any other discussion at all? If not, Beth has short title for us, please.
An ordinance of the city of Norfolk, Nebraska, to amend Section four-dash-five of the official city code to update references to Nebraska statutes that have been relocated, to provide when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and to provide for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative, Ordinance fifty-two-ninety-eight carries on first reading.
I'll make a motion, we suspend the rules and pass Ordinance fifty-two-ninety-eight on second and third.
Second.
We have a motion with a second to suspend the rules and pass on second and third, no further discussion, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative, Ordinance fifty-two-ninety-eight carries on second and third.
Okay, with that, there is tonight a public comment period, which means anyone in the audience that wants to come forward and speak to this council, um, there is no action that can occur, but certainly we're here to listen. Anyone that wants to come forward and speak, we'll ask you to sign in, state your name.
Can we make a comment?
Can you make a comment? I've never been able to stop you yet, Dave, so go forward.
I'd just like to point out, I was talking with Dennis earlier in the night, we had about four inches of rain over the weekend, and our friends up the road at Woodland Park had the same situation we ran into a few years ago, and, and we handled it really well this time, and everything looks like it's flowing good, so I think we're making headway on that end of town, and, and, and we've learned from the first episode, and so things are going better, so just wanted to say that.
Yep, good comment, very positive, so, Dennis?
I think there were some other things that occurred at some of the other times, and the ground was much more saturated, and the rains were over a shorter period of time, so while we're making progress out there, I'm not gonna say that we've got all the issues sol- solved.
Well, we're moving forward, and, okay, anybody?
Here, I have, I do have an update on-
Okay.
On our emergency, I just-
I just, I got texts from the ELC here, it looks like we got our hazmat teams over dealing with Pilgrim's co-ops damages considerably, and they're over to dealing with the chemicals there. Rescue units is, our, our rescue units, one of our rescue units covering, helping cover Stanton's area, because Stanton's engaged with deeply there in a mutual aid situation with Pilgrim directly, they provide direct rescue service, Stanton does, so they're directly dealing with that, and we're covering the rest of their area. Finding a few more destroyed homes, no, no other victims yet, is what I've been told. Some of our staff is heading back, and the ELC remains open, so.
Okay. Seeing nobody that wants to come forward, then, we are adjourned. Thanks, everybody.